It's called this meeting to order. Welcome to the twenty eighth Liquor Commission Meeting. We'll go ahead and go into agenda item number one for special license application. Calling application number two one dash two two seven zero seven from Kapahale LLC. Hi, gentlemen, go ahead and identify yourself for the record.
Commissioner, this is Seth Buckley and Keaka Lee on behalf of the applicant Kapahale LLC.
Okay, can you go ahead and spell your name for the record, please? Sorry, I know we have Keaka, but we Seth.
Seth, first name S E T H, last name Buckley, B U C K L E Y.
Okay, commissioners, any questions or comments? So, um, I have one question, gentlemen. What is the room capacity for this, um, event, I mean, this space that you guys are acquiring?
The room capacity is a hundred twenty, however, due to COVID, it is a half to the most people.
Okay, perfect. Commissioners, any questions or comments for the applicant?
And that even if we grant this license, that all of the emergency rules regarding COVID nineteen still apply. So if you folks are found in violation by any of the authorities, you're still gonna be responsible for that, even if the license is permitted, okay?
Of course, um, we wanna keep our privacy as well as the rest safe too, so we'll.
Okay, just wanna make sure you guys understand that you're not exempt from the rules because we're granting, if we grant the, um, the license, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, if I can, I'm sorry, also add to the applicants that if they have any questions about any of the rules or procedures that the administration is available for consultation in addition to our website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, um, motion to approve application number two one dash two two seven zero seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number special license app, um, number two one dash two two seven zero seven. All those in favor? Miss Hori, please.
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye. Okay, it's been approved. Um, you guys have agenda item two, yeah, as well, so let me call that agenda. Uh, preliminary hearing, agenda item number two, application number two one dash two two five five three. Gentlemen, identify yourself for the record once again.
Commissioner Seth Buckley and Keaka Lee on behalf of the applicant Kapahale LLC.
Thank you.
Questions, commissioners? A motion to approve application number two one dash two two five five three, five five three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two one dash two two five five three. Um, all those in favor? Miss Hori?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Commissioner.
Moving on to agenda item number three, application number two one dash two two four nine seven from the Pearl Golf Management LLC, Mr. Ueoka.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, Ms. Hori, Robert Ueoka, I'm Yapa Pearl Country Club. This time I'd request a continuance of one week. Uh, we submitted the second amendment, assigned second amendment, um, this week, but it's still, we're still working with licensing on it, so we should, we could get another week, that'd be great, February fourth.
Okay.
Motion to continue, uh, agenda item three, application number two one dash two two four nine seven for one week.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the continuance of agenda item number three to application number two one dash two two four nine seven to February fourth, twenty twenty one. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion is carried.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number four, application number two one dash two two seven one six from Full Vietnam Incorporated, Mr. Luke.
Um, uh, the web host has asked that we skip this matter for a couple of steps 'cause Mr. Luke is in the wrong room. And we'll, and we'll return.
Okay. We'll move forward and we'll move forward to request, we'll move forward to agenda item number five. Um, request number two one dash two two four four one from Cole LLC, DBA Four Seasons Resort.
Uh, good, good afternoon, Chair members of the commission, David Banks appearing on behalf of the applicant, Cole LLC. I should have on the phone with me, um, Kessley Hui, who's the manager for Cole LLC.
We, Mr. Banks, we don't see Kessley, and if, if they are on the line, if they could identify themselves for the record and spell their name, please?
Hi, Commissioner, um, this is Kessley Hui.
Okay, can you spell your name? What was your last name? Sorry.
Yes, Kessley, K B S L I E, last name is H U I.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions, concerns?
Motion to approve request number two one dash two two four four one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two four four one. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you. Calling agenda item number six, request number two one dash two two seven six one from eight oh eight Tavern Incorporated.
Um, Madam Vice. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, DBA Honolulu Tavern.
Uh, Madam Vice, Chair and Commissioners, with respect to agenda items number six and seven, the licensee, uh, President Cindy Kamao has requested a one-week continuance, uh, for both items six and seven due to a, a personal situation.
Okay.
Motion to continue agenda item number six, request number two one dash two two seven six one, uh, to February fourth, two thousand twenty one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item six, request number two one dash two two seven six one to February fourth, twenty twenty one. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Okay, we'll call, um, agenda item seven, request number two one dash two two seven six two, um, nine six seven three four Tavern.
Okay, um, same, right, okay. Motion to continue agenda item number seven, request number two one dash two two seven six two to February fourth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
I'm sorry, two thousand twenty one.
Thank you, um, it's been moved in second to, um, continue agenda item seven, request number two one dash two two seven six two until February fourth. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Going into agenda item number eight, request number two one dash two two seven six four from Mr. Kyuchi on behalf of TM Restaurants.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair members in the commission, Keith Kyuchi on behalf of the applicant. This is the old Louis Bueno space which closed, um, the license expired on June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, but there's been no intervening.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions, concerns for Mr. Kyuchi?
Prove request number two one dash two two seven six four.
Second.
They moved in second to approve request number two one dash two two seven six four. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair, motion for the adoption of decision in order for agenda items nine through eleven inclusive.
Second.
It moved in, moved, it's been moved in second to, um, ad- adopt, adoption of decision in order for agenda items nine through eleven inclusive. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Okay, we are now in the adjudication hearings. Ms. Nestie, ready to proceed?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, I'll call the agenda, so we'll call agenda item number twelve, La Cucina.
You don't see her in the room? I think Ms. Delacruz is not in the room yet, so.
Oh, Ms. Point of order, we don't have Mr. Luke either, yeah?
No, he's, uh, we're trying to reach him on the phone, uh, as soon as we can secure either Ms. Delacruz or Mr. Luke in the room, we can, we'll let you know.
Okay, so let's proceed to, um, agenda item number thirteen, um, Lupino, Lupino?
Oh, yes, um, so for this matter, uh, sorry, let me just make my appearance. Catherine Nestie, Deputy Corporation Counsel, appearing on the adjudication matters for today's hearing. Um, on this matter, I think, uh, Rhea Delacruz is the representative and she, um, contacted me and an emergency situation came up. She contacted me just shortly before this hearing, um, and requested a continuance, and I have no objection. Uh, we agreed a permanent date, it'll be February twenty fifth, twenty one, if the commission is amenable to that.
I'm sorry, this is with respect to agenda item number twelve.
Thir- thirteen.
Okay, so, um, Rhea Del- Delacruz was listed, uh, for number twelve?
I have, um, Don Trung and I think his wife for La Cucina, is that incorrect?
Actually, we have those two for, uh, Il Lupino.
Okay, I'm sorry, I might have had those mixed up.
My understanding is both twelve and thirteen are gonna be continued, but.
Oh. I had, sorry, um, my understanding was twelve and fourteen, which would be La Cucina and then Vegan Hills. I, I had those requested, um, for continuances, but I, I had La Cucina as.
Oh, okay.
Appearing, um, my phone. Is that, is someone present for La Cucina?
We do have someone on the phone, um, eight oh eight two two three four two one two, is that Ms. Delacruz?
Okay.
Yeah, we're unable to determine if the, the phone caller is here for number twelve. We're, we're unable to determine that.
Could we confirm, Anna, that agenda item thirteen, Il Lupino, is for a Ms. Delacruz? And then we can move to continue that matter?
Um, uh, to be honest, our records, our, our grid shows that, uh, Il Lupino, number thirteen, would be represented by Don Trung and Dara Sulata, or Sulata, and Rhea Delacruz for number twelve.
Well, I'm sorry, I think you're right, sorry, um. You're right, I'm sorry, I did have that mixed up. So for La Cucina, number twelve, I did speak with Rhea Delacruz, so that was the one.
May I? Thank you, um, may I ask the chair to call matter twelve and we can move to continue that item?
Okay, um, but let's recall, so let's recall agenda item number twelve and take action on that. Um, let's call number, uh, agenda item twelve, La Cucina.
And Ms. Nestie earlier made a representation that the, the licensee of Ms. Delacruz is unable to attend the proceeding today?
That's correct, I will put her in, no objection, um, we just request the continuance of this matter to February twenty fifth.
Okay, motion to continue agenda item number twelve to February twenty fifth, twenty twenty one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number twelve to February twenty five, twenty twenty one. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min. Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Okay, we'll call, we'll recall now, agenda item number thirteen, Lupino? Ms. Nestie, what are we doing with this one?
Uh, I, my understanding is that the owner is scheduled to appear.
Okay.
Um, you could just, I guess, pass it for now, and then we'll, uh, we see Mr. Lucas made it into the room, so we'll circle back after we complete, I guess, the adjudications.
Okay, so we'll, um, move on to agenda item number fourteen, Vegan Hills.
Okay, for this matter, I spoke with, um, the licensee, an emergency also came up, um, for this particular licensee. Uh, they requested that this matter be continued, and I have no objection. Uh, we requested this be continued to February twenty fifth as well.
Thank you, motion to continue agenda item number fourteen to February twenty five, twenty twenty one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number fourteen to February twenty five, twenty twenty one. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Okay, let's call agenda item number fifteen, Stu Baum and Stone Wall.
Uh, this is Darren Garvey with Stu Baum and Stone Wall, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Ms. Nestie.
Yes, uh, the licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August fourth, twenty twenty, a report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen, and ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty, in violation of rule three dash eighty one dash seventeen point five four C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Mr. Garvey, how do you wish to plead? Uh, motion to accept the plea.
Second.
They moved in second to accept the plea for agenda item number fifteen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Ms. Nestie, what's your recommendation?
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Garvey, do you have any comments or explanation?
Um, I mean, during that time, we were laid off, most of our staff, including our, our bookkeeper who kept all of our numbers, and it was during the time we were closed from, for, except for takeout, so, I mean, that, that was the situation, trying to get out of or anything like that, but that was our situation, so, um, that's why we, we missed it.
Have you since, uh, submitted your, uh, gross liquor sales?
No, I was actually working on it today, um, like I said, this is our first year doing it, so I'm doing it myself. So I'm gonna try to submit it, um, next week or so, I'm trying to gather all the numbers and everything and get them in.
Okay, have you had the opportunity to work with administration?
I attended, or one, well, one of my managers attended the, um, there was a webinar or something about completing the, uh, the forms. Um, so, and we just got our managers back, so I'm gonna try to work with that person to, who attended that, to get it completed. But I haven't reached out to anybody else about, about submitting it.
Okay, ha- have you been, are, are you open currently?
Oh, yeah, we're open now, yeah.
Okay, um, motion to convene into executive session?
Second.
They moved in second to convene into executive session. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye. Motion carried, we are now in executive session.
Yes.
Okay, all parties are here, Mr. Garvey's back, okay, let's recall, um, agenda item number fifteen, Stu, Stu Baum and Stone Wall.
Mr. Garvey, about how long would it take you to get your gross liquor sales information in order?
Um, I would say by Monday.
This coming Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. My motion's gonna be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, and I'm also gonna require the licensee to submit gross liquor sales within thirty days of today. I also urge you, Mr. Garvey, to work with the administration if you have any problems assembling your information.
Okay.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the recommended fine for agenda item number fifteen in the amount of five hundred dollars, and also requiring the licensee to turn in the GLS, um, report within thirty days. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garvey.
Thank you.
Moving to agenda item number sixteen, Honolulu Airy Number One Forty Fraternal Order of Eagles.
There's, well, yeah, they're, they're down in, uh, suite one one one, so we just, here they are, okay?
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi.
Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Robert Kuah, I am the, uh, Worthy Secretary for the Fraternal Order of Eagles.
I'm sorry, did you say Mr. Kuah?
Kuah, C U A.
Kuah, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Nestie?
Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August fourth, twenty twenty, a report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty, in violation of rule three dash eighty one dash seventeen point five four C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Mr. Kuah, how do you wish to plead?
No contest.
Thank you, motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Moved in second to accept the no contest plea. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
Also vote aye, motion is carried.
Ms. Nestie, what's your recommendation?
This is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Kuah, do you have any comment or explanation?
The, um, the previous bar manager we had, he quit, so we brought back the old bar manager. And these guys are like eighty years old, yeah, and, uh, he caught the COVID. So I, first of all, I don't even know if they filed the GLS yet, this is because they did, they didn't file the GLS, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, so, uh, uh, we're in the process right now of trying to tie up all the loose ends, um, because the, the second bar manager they gave me, he caught the COVID. And I, I, I didn't know he didn't file the GLS, so, um, I guess I'm gonna have to do it myself, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to go, uh, I, I was asking if there was a class that I can learn how to do the GLS. We're hardly open because, uh, because of the current COVID crisis, yeah. But, uh, I'm willing to learn how to do this GLS forms and turn it in as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Nestie, do your records show that the licensee has not yet turned in the GLS report?
That's correct, it's still not filed.
And we do have audit supervisor, uh, Akiko Reyes, actually, she's in suite one 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 in a different part of the, uh, of that room, uh, av- available if Mr. Kuah would like to talk to her about getting assistance with the filing.
Okay, thank you, so my motion for agenda item sixteen is to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, and with the requirement that the gross liquor sales be submitted within thirty days of today, and Mr. Kuah, as you heard from Ms. Hori, please reach out to the administration because we do have resources that can assist you in preparing the report.
Okay, thank you. Can I?
It moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for Honolulu Airy Number One Forty, also with the condition to, requirement to turn in the gross liquor sales within thirty days of today. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay, calling the next agenda item, agenda item number seventeen, Bricks and Bones.
They're coming online now. Here we go.
Hi.
Hey, can you state your name for the record?
Uh, my name is Lataya Parker.
Can you?
Manager, owner of Bricks and Bones.
Can you spell your first name, Ms. Parker?
Lataya, L A T T A Y A, last name Parker, P A R K E R.
Thank you, Ms. Nestie.
Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August fourth, twenty twenty, report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months beginning July one, twenty nineteen, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty, in violation of rule three dash eighty one dash seventeen point five four C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Yes.
Ms. Parker, sorry, Ms. Parker, how do you wish to plead?
I'm sorry, I can hear you.
How do you wish to plead to the charge?
It, no contest, and then, um.
Oh, hold on a second, uh, motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Yes. Yes. They moved in second, it's been moved in second to, um, it's, to accept the plea in agenda item number seventeen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Mia Shirou.
Aye.
Ganabon.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay, thank you.
Uh, hold on a second, Ms. Nestie, what's your recommendation?
First violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Ms. Parker, do you have any comment or explanation?
Um, no, my C, my CPA is just, uh, they've been, they shutting the doors, they're not picking up my phone calls, and so I don't know, and I'm just having really hard time communicating with them, and I accept all responsibility.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Nestie, the, do your records show that the licensee submitted the report?
Uh, my record shows it still has not been filed.
Okay, Ms. Parker, are, what are you doing to complete the gross liquor sales?
Well, I'm trying to get in touch with him, I mean, I, 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 I call him weeks and days, and turns into weeks, weeks turn into months, so I very.
I call him weeks and days and turns into weeks, weeks turn into months, so I am very much frustrated as well. So I don't, he he um caught COVID and then he didn't work for months. And it just, it, he's all backed up and I guess he's not really trying to. Um, fix this for me, so I don't know what to do at the moment, but I will try to um. Get him to finish, uh maybe because he's he's really busy. Of other cases or other clients, I don't know.
Okay, you, I I saw you on the um. Video conference, you probably heard what we were telling the other licensees, so I'm gonna. Make a motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, but I'm gonna require you to turn in your. Gross liquor sales report within thirty days of today.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
And moved in second to uh to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars in the amount, I, in the, for the agenda item number seventeen. And also with the requirement that the licensee is to turn in the gross liquor sales report within thirty days from today. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Hi.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
Vote aye, the motion is carried.
Thank you.
Calling agenda number eighteen Kapolei Karaoke. Anyone appearing for Kapolei Karaoke? Ms. Nesty, any communication with the licensee?
Uh, I did make two phone calls, one last Friday and one yesterday, I did not receive a phone call back. Um, I do have a copy of the notice of hearing that uh was. Served on the manager Ashley Valencia, she signed for it on January twentieth twenty twenty-one. Um, and the notice informed them of the hearing today. I would request a default enter.
Ms. Nesty, um, do your records show that this license you turned in the report?
Uh, my record shows that the the report has not been filed, this is a second um violation. The first having been um fiscal year twenty nineteen.
And what is your recommended fine for the second, second uh fine?
Um, my recommended fine is one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, this also includes. The suspended fee of five hundred dollars that was from the twenty nineteen violation.
So the, to break it down, it would be a fee of one thousand two hundred fifty plus. A suspended fine of five hundred?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, the total will be for one thousand seven hundred and fifty, um, that included the suspended fee. So twelve hundred fifty um for the current violation and then an additional five hundred. For the twenty nineteen, which brings us to the seventeen fifty.
Okay, motion for default judgment for agenda item eighteen. With the approval of the recommended fine of one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
They moved in second to it to um to. Enter um a default judgment on this matter and approve the recommended fee of one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Hi.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
Aye, motion is carried. Here, um, we're going to go to agenda item number nineteen Misty Blue.
Hi, Chambliss.
Sorry, can't hear you.
Hi, Chambliss K Y E, Chambliss C H A M B L E S S.
Sorry, what is your last name?
Chambliss.
Thank you, Ms. Nesty.
Yes, on or about September twenty-nine twenty twenty in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to comply with any other laws applicable to the business of licensee. Whether in existence at the time of issue of such license or enacted or amended from time to time thereafter. To wit, violation of the office of the mayor, city and county of Honolulu Emergency Order Number twenty twenty dash twenty-seven. COVID nineteen novel coronavirus, Honolulu's COVID nineteen recovery framework order implementing tier one. Issued September twenty-third twenty twenty in violation of section two eighty-one dash thirty-eight of the Hawaii revised statute.
Ms. Chambliss, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Thank you, motion to accept the plea.
Second.
They moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number nineteen, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Hi.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion is carried.
Thank you, Ms. Nesty, what's your recommendation?
Uh, in this situation, uh there was a failure to maintain the contact tracing information from the customer's dining in. Uh, this is a first violation with a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Ms. Chambliss, do you have any comment or explanation?
I'm sorry, it was a misunderstanding because uh the customer writing his. Name is so monkey, was not real name. And we tried, still we had fighting with a lot of customers, so we didn't serve the. Alcohol food anything because they didn't writing real name and address. And I want to, I had only one person writing because I thought. It's uh one, it's a four people coming in, I I thought it's a one, only one person writing is okay, I thought. Was, I'm sorry, it was misunderstood.
Okay, you understand what you're have to do going forward?
Yes, so we changed it to right now, privacy, and we're doing like this. The individual people writing address, phone number, temperature, date. So anybody can see that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Right now.
Thank you, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars in the um for the agenda item number nineteen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Hi.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, the motion is carried, thank you.
Uh, Vice Chair uh Ganabon, uh I see that uh Ms. uh Don Trong has uh entered the room for number thirteen. If you want to go back.
Um, I'll go ahead and if if it. I'll go ahead and call agenda item number four, cause I do see Mister Luke here as well. So let's, um commissioners, if we could, let's call agenda item number four. Application number two one dash two two seven one six from full Vietnam I N C, Mister Luke.
Good afternoon, uh, to my right is Kim Lee Tran, she is the owner, she is familiar with counsel Wayne Luke. Uh, we have no comments we got in the liquor industry for. We just wanna let commission know she is keeping the former employees, uh we have nothing further.
Thank you, Mister Luke, commissioners, any questions, comments? Type of action? Hi, okay. Are we on agenda thirteen, correct?
Or four?
Um, four.
Want me to make the motion?
Yeah, hold on one second, sorry, my computer is stalling, okay, there we go. Uh, this is for agenda item four, correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion to approve application number two one dash two two seven one six.
Second.
Is it moved in second to approve application number two one dash two two seven one six, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Hi.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
Vote aye, motion is carried, thank you, Mister Luke.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's recall agenda item number thirteen. Lupino?
Okay, Mister Trong is apparently here for number twelve.
Okay, I believe we took action on item twelve.
Yeah.
So, point of order.
You would just recall the item and and override that action by. By taking action, I I guess, uh Denise, if there's um something more specific than uh that. Uh, please so advise the commission.
Denise, um, so is that okay, we'll just recall agenda item twelve?
Yes.
Okay, so let's call agenda item number twelve La Cucina.
Hi, I'm Dara Salata. I'm a member of uh La Cucina.
Could you spell your name, please?
D A R A, last name is S O U L A T H A.
And you're a member of La Cucina?
Correct.
Thank you, Ms. Nesty, if you could read the charge?
Licensee failed to file with the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu on or before August four twenty twenty. A report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee. During the twelve months beginning July one twenty nineteen and ending June thirty twenty twenty. In violation of rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five four C of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Ma'am, how do you wish to plead?
Guilty.
Thank you, motion to accept the plea.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the plea for, the guilty plea for agenda item number twelve, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Hi.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
Just a vote aye, motion is carried.
Ms. Nesty, what's your recommendation?
This is a third uh violation with a recommended fine of one thousand five hundred dollars.
Has the current um GLS report been submitted?
Yes.
Okay, ma'am, if, could you, um, do you have any comment or explanation for not turning your gross liquor sales report?
My accountant was in the hospital uh with pneumonia, and so he filed late.
Okay. Thank you, uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand five hundred dollars for agenda item number twelve.
Second.
They moved in second to approve the recommended fine of fifteen hundred dollars for agenda item number twelve, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Hi.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, getting back on the, no other recalls, yeah, Ms. Hari?
Uh, actually, you, we now need to dispose of thirteen.
Okay.
Because I guess uh Del- uh Ms. Dela Cruz was actually for thirteen. But there is no one in the room.
Yes, I'm sorry, back to this one, I did speak with Ms. Dela Cruz. Um, and something came up, so she requested that this matter be continued, um, I have no objection, we request. That it be continued to February twenty-fifth twenty-one.
Okay, at a point of order, let me just rec- um recall the matter, so let me call agenda item number thirteen Lupino.
Ms. Nesty, if you can restate your request?
Yes, uh, I spoke with Ms. Dela Cruz, uh, something came up, she requested that the matter be continued. Um, and I have no objection, we request a continuance to February twenty-fifth twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, motion to continue agenda item thirteen to February twenty-five twenty twenty-one.
Second.
They moved in second to continue agenda item number thirteen to February twenty-five twenty twenty-one, all those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Hi.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we're on other business, we are on agenda item number twenty. Liquor commission business, or what is this? So Liquor Commission election of interim chairperson.
Move to elect uh Vice Chair Narcie Ganabon as the interim chairperson.
Second.
Um, it's been moved in second. To elect. Narcie Ganabon as the interim chair, all those in favor?
Uh, Lee.
Is that?
Aye.
Uh, Min.
Hi.
Mia Shiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
Can I vote in this night, okay?
You can, but you could also have enough.
Joe usually won for recruits.
You can abstain if you want, if you want.
Yeah, I'll abstain, I'll abstain. Okay, so motion carried, thank you.
Congratulations, Chair.
Haha, thank you, thank you, um, before we depart, I know that um. We haven't, I don't know who's left on the, on the line, but um. I had wanted to, it was a sudden departure for our former Chair O'Donnell. And um, I think we'll be handling that business next week, Tuesday on a more informal level, however. What I did wanna say is that I wanted to offer my own heartfelt gratitude towards um Commissioner O'Donnell. Our former Chair um O'Donnell now, um, for his years of service with the Liquor Commission, and he has served. More or less as a mentor for me for the past six years that I've been here, so his um commitment every Thursday. Um, and putting in the um, the time that he's done, um, never went unnoticed. And I just wanted to um. Even though he's not on this record, I hope, hopefully he'll hear about this, is just wish him the best in his next appointment. Um, and his future retirement then after.
I'd like to second and echo those statements as well, he was a mentor to me when I joined the commission. You know, we had a skeleton crew, right Narcie? And 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 he really coached me and in um. In um, you know, serving on the commission and we're, he's gonna be missed, but um, we're confident. Uh, Chair Ganabon is gonna lead us onwards.
I second.
Really big shoes to fill, I'm a little intimidated.
I'd also like to state for the record that um, the. The vacancy will be filled by the mayor's office, so if anyone from the public is still listening, or if they. Call the commission to inquire, you can direct them to the mayor's office. Regards to the vacancy, which hopefully will be filled soon.
And just a short um comment for the record, I'd like to also note. My big mahalo for Chair O'Donnell, past Chair O'Donnell, for all of his guidance. Um, in my few years with the commission and I look forward to Commissioner Ganabon's leadership going forward, thank you.
Yeah, I'll say a brief word as well, um. He kept, Joe kept mentioning that he's been on the commission for eleven years. Um, so that's a quite a bit of time. To serve the public, and I know he enjoyed probably most of those years with the commission. Wishing Joe the best.
Very good, yeah, and you know, I'd like to say that he always made a a a point to be present, you know. He rarely missed any meetings, uh, and. He s- he started, served someone else's term, and then he got appointed to new time, so. That was a great uh help to us, keep the commission uh moving forward. And I'm thank thankful that we've all stepped forward, keep volunteering. And being president every Thursday.
Okay, so um, moving on, we'll go to agenda item number twenty-one, we have any liquor administrator business?
I have nothing to add unless Anna has anything.
Nope.
Anything, Anna?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, folks. Okay, thank you, folks. Have a good evening. Have a good meeting.
Meeting adjourned.